You have two minutes left that you can talk, so.
Purvis says the meeting that we're attending on Zoom just started.
We got it. I didn't want a lot of noise in the background because we're recording. You seem to be the only one in here by them, yeah?
Please figure this. Candace, are you ready to roll? Okay, it's five o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a joint meeting between the town of Carefree, the Town Council, and the Public Safety Advisory Committee. We're going to be running two meetings here at the same time and concurrently. So thank you all for coming. I'd like to publicly thank all of the members of the committee. I think you have done, this is a difficult task, as you have, I don't think I'm telling you anything new here. There are many intertwined things that go on, and we're here for the safety of the residents of the town of Carefree. Candace, would you please do a roll call? I believe all of the council members are here. Before we say the pledge, I'd like, pardon me? Yes, they're all here. Now, before we say the pledge, I'd like to do a couple of things, just in terms of housekeeping. We're going to have a presentation. It'll be in-depth, it may be quite lengthy. I'd like to, during the time that the presentation is being made, if members of the council would like to ask a question, would like to make a comment, I would ask them to do so. Members of the public, we will have a time after it's concluded. I would ask you to limit them, keep them on topic. We have a council meeting coming up in two weeks, if it's on another subject, and we'll get to that at that point in time. Also, no cell phones, no texting. It's very disruptive to people. And when both of these doors were open, there was a wind which came sweeping through here. So we'll try and keep those closed, or at least one of them, to the extent that we can. So thank you all for coming. This is the first disclosure, if you will, of this to the Town Council. And those of you who are here, there will be several additional open houses, during which time the committee members, select committee members, will be available to present, to talk, to take you through their experience, what they found out, et cetera, because they are making a recommendation to, in reality, the citizens of Carefree, and also to the Town Council, because it's a two-step process. So I'd like to ask Ralph, who's a member, I can't see him with the podium here, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and the flag is right over here. Thank you. Item number one on the agenda, and this young lady seated over on my right-hand side, I think on your left-hand side. Leslie, I wonder if you might introduce the committee and then take over item number one. Thank you.
Fine. Well, we're delighted to be here today, and most importantly, this is a group that's been meeting for the last 10 months, all by Zoom. So we're meeting for the first time, each other, in person today. My pleasure to welcome them and introduce them. Jeri Bada, here at the end. Yuri, Kanta Ha, and Tanya Moki. So then, Peter Bird, you're on, we're also. That Peterson, that you are out of our. You want to join us up here, it's a place for you. Okay, and with that, we have the order business, opening this meeting, which is our last minute, January 21st. So we all, we always need those, hopefully we had a chance to review them. And I'd like to give permission, eight minutes. Well, two seconds, Jerry. Any pages, any comments? On the paper? Those retention, no. Yeah, let's wait a minute, start approved.
Okay, number one, the minutes are approved. Item number two, presentation of the final report and the recommendation of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, dated January 21, 2022. And I believe there are going to be three people presenting this, Leslie, Sheila, and Peter. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, and we look forward to this. Thank you.
And it is rather lengthy, so Mayor was correct. We wanted to give this both, it's due in terms of the work that's been put in, but we also will work in ways to efficiently and allow time for conversation and questions. To that point, as we speak, and I will open, and then be followed by Peter, and then Sheila. So we'll need to have our part in that, and then I'll come back and close the presentation. But in honoring the way that we worked through this whole process, is to honor each committee member's input and perspective. So I want to invite the committee, as we move through the presentation, if there's some point that's been missing, glaringly missing, can I need the, this?
I'm just realizing.
It's, it's.
We don't need it for us, but.
Okay. Okay, so I want to invite each committee member, if there's something missing or something you want to weigh in with on a particular point, please feel free to do that. So that will just be on the committee, for the committee at this time. And then, as the mayor indicated at the end of the presentation, he'll field any questions, public comment questions. Okay, so this, this presentation that we're going to start, importantly, is based on the report that the committee has completed and put together. So this is available online, and I want to encourage you, if you haven't pulled down a copy of the committee's report and recommendations, to please do so. And it may answer a lot of questions as well. So following the presentation, if there are bits and pieces that you want to go back to or need more background, please, please refer to this report. It's available to you and documents the work of the committee. So we've done introductions. This might keep me from roaming around too much. We've done introductions, I'm in the committee and in the process. And as I mentioned, this group has been meeting since April. We've met twice a month, for at least two hours each of those meetings. So significant amount of citizen involvement and input in this process. Each committee member, I mean, we didn't know each other. We'd never worked together. We were just all citizens that stepped up and volunteered to this process. Some of us know absolutely nothing about fire. Some people in public safety services, some had more experience with that. We come from a diverse background. Backgrounds. We have finance in the mix, we have real estate in the mix, we have some fire service. We have residents who are recent additions to our community and residents who have been here since before incorporation. And we have a broad spectrum and diverse perspectives. We also have very diverse perspectives when it comes to financing, community policy issues. So we, yeah, we were not of one mind, which made it a wonderful process, and I think all the richer. Okay, so what we're going to do today in the presentation overview is to touch a little on the background and context of what brought us to this conversation today. And I want to emphasize conversation. This really is a conversation between the council and the committee. We want to be available to address any questions that the council may have, so that they can move forward with next steps. So we'll talk about background and context. We'll talk about some of the factors influencing the future of public safety services. And we understood them here in Carefree, and we'll talk about the financing of public safety services here in Carefree. Then we'll touch on our recommendations that we're putting forward to the committee. Okay, we kind of covered this. We were appointed as a committee by the Town Council. We were all volunteers, and we stepped up for this. Again, very diverse perspectives and backgrounds, and it was an open process. Because it was a council-appointed committee, we were governed by meeting laws, and we took care with how we conducted those online. But the invitation was always open to any community resident or interested person to observe and participate, ask questions, or make comments during that process. So very much a citizen engagement process for almost 10 months of time.
Just a comment, give you a chance to rest your voice just a minute. Leslie is very correct. This is a group of volunteers. We didn't want this to be something that the council was trying to push upon citizens. We wanted this to be a diverse group of citizens who volunteered and said, this is of interest. We would like to get into all of the facts that are pertaining to this subject and come to you with recommendations. So we basically have a blank slate and are hearing it, like most of you are right now. So we look forward to this, but, you know, for having read the report, it's been in our packet for a number of days now. And board.
Again, the invitation to the council to weigh in with any question or comment as we go. Okay, so the question is, why, why bring us together at this point? Why this committee? Why this question? Why look at public safety here in Carefree at this point in time? So the existing contract that we have had in place with Rural Metro for the last 15 years is up for renewal or expires this coming July. So that was one of the big prime motivators. It was time to relook at that. The last time there was a careful look at our fire service needs and public safety needs here in Carefree was in 2012, 10 years ago. So this was a good opportunity to step back, take a look, refresh what we know, and think about what the future might hold. We also, as you all know, we've seen increased risk of wildfire, drought conditions, things that up the stakes in our community. Our neighboring, in our neighboring community of wildfires there a couple of years ago. So that risk is very real, and it's top of everyone's mind, so we feed that into our assessment. We, there was increased interest being expressed and some more conversation that had to do with this expanding automatic aid system that was occurring throughout the county. And we're going to talk in far more detail about that, but that conversation was really keeping up. And part of that was due to some of the changes Kate Creek was making. So as you all might know, Kate Creek did not have a fire department until January of this year. So their residents were on voluntary subscription service with Rural Metro, but the town itself did not have a fire department. And change that's the conversations that we've been having here. And they've really, they've looked at that, and their decisions were important to our conversation. So we were watching and had an eye on what was going on in Kate Creek in terms of its impact on the future of Carefree services here. So what was happening in Kate Creek was important. And most recently, that meant a contract with Daisy Mountain Fire District to provide the personnel and staffing, but also the establishment of a fire station and the acquisition of fire equipment. This is good news for Carefree as a neighboring community that our closest neighbor has its new capacity. So, but that was just something we had in our mind. We were watching carefully how that was moving forward. We also know or knew, and the town has known, that we have run a persistent deficit when it's come to paying for our fire protection services over the last 12 years. So we have seen average deficits run almost every year. We're going to get into more detail with that. But that persistent deficit and how we pay for fire services was a key interest and important to the committee. It's not a daily time looking at that and exploring how we could, how we should be thinking about financing. We also, we've public safety, and you'll hear me do that broadly throughout the presentation, includes our contract with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, so our law enforcement services. And we had an opportunity to open discussions to see if we needed to augment those services that we have in place with NCSO. So it was, we put it under a whole umbrella of public safety and looked at both law enforcement and our fire service in this process.
One of the things that I would point out, and it is, I think purposely not on here, is why evaluate public services, safety services now? It was in no way related to dissatisfaction with Rural Metro. We've had a 50-year, very positive, very successful relationship with that organization, and they have performed outstanding service. Sometimes things happen to all of us. So I want to thank all these gentlemen, in particular, as representative of those who came before you for the last 50 years. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor, and let us right in to the beginning of context and background emphatically. Well, this, what wasn't on the table in terms of a need to evaluate services with any concern whatsoever, performance-wise or service-wise with our existing contract with Rural Metro. So that was, that was not on the table in reason. We have, it was demonstrated over and over through the conversations we had, the examinations that we made of call data and response information that we have been extremely well-served in this community by Rural Metro for many, many years. So we have had mutual aid agreements that had, when necessary, which has been very infrequently, I believe nine times over, I'm sure, you know, here, nine, over 15 years, we've had to draw mutual aid for response calls. So we use that very little, but if we had needed it, if there had been a major fire event in this community requiring additional assistance, we had those agreements in place with Scottsdale and once upon a time, Phoenix as well. We, the medical calls, which are the predominant calls that we see in this community, we see a dispatch of both our fire engine and the ambulance. So on every call that is made into that, that is a unique feature. It's not done in every community. So we've had that additional service and layering of service for every call. Important to know, as we move through this with public safety services, ambulance service is not something that is under the town's control. It is governed by what's called a certificate of necessity, and it is issued by the state. And it is beyond, we don't contract or make choices with these kinds of ambulance services. That was a piece that we had to constantly keep straight in our minds, even though our contract, our con, is issued to Rural Metro in this particular area. So there was a synergy there that was important and powerful. Okay, so as we mentioned, the master contract that we had in place with Rural Metro since 2007 expires this coming June, June 30th. So, and again, Rural Metro has met all contract scopes. There've been no performance issues reported. There's nothing shared with this committee that indicates anything other than stellar response services. So just a little bit of background, until 05-06, this community was subscription-based, just as Cave Creek was until January of this year. So that meant that residents could subscribe or not. The average cost of that subscription back in 2005 was $750 average per resident. And I believe there was roughly 60% subscriber rate. So at that point in 05-06, it was determined that Carefree needed its own fire department. There were changes occurring in neighboring Scottsdale that Carefree tuned into and decided we needed to be independent in our fire service and have those resources here in this community. So we built a fire station, we bought a fire truck, and we engaged Rural Metro as our provider of those services. We also paid for that, importantly, through a 1% sales tax, dedicated sales tax. So we're going to hear more about that. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. The town of Carefree, 3% sales tax. 1% of that 3% goes only to fire. And that's how we paid it. That's where the deficit is occurring. That 1% sales tax has not been enough to cover the cost of our fire service on average. So we, again, implemented the master contract in '07, and we have been working with Rural Metro on that capacity ever since. On law enforcement services, NCSO has been with us providing law enforcement service since our incorporation here in Carefree as a town. So we have full access to law enforcement services, and the, and law enforcement in the NCSO contract is paid through the town's general fund. So there's not a dedicated tax that pays for that. It comes out of the general operating budget that pays for that. We are a very low-crime community, very low. Traffic calming tends to be our biggest concern at this point. So in listening to NCSO's presentation and learning about what they offer, the committee felt very comfortable in the services level that we were receiving and in the arrangement and contract we have with NCSO. So here are some statistics, and oh, boy, that's going to test you. I was a little concerned about that. I'm going to try to walk you through some of these more important numbers. Okay. Okay, so the top number up here, the single most significant number is for this past year, the year ending June 2021, with 458 calls, 62% of total calls for medical assistance. So remember, for medical calls, we send the engine, we send the ambulance. Our engine was engaged and busy, conducted doing that. But if you look at calls for fire over the last three fiscal years in total, including brush fires, vehicle fires, residential fire, commercial fire, in the year ending June 30th, 2021, we had seven such calls for fire-related calls. We had 12 in the previous fiscal year, and the year before that, we had 10. So that's significant. Fire calls have been very low. We utilize our fire service for medical assistance. That's what these numbers tell us. The other thing we see in these numbers that is worthy of some attention is the number of false alarms. So we send our fire department on a lot of calls that turn out to be nothing. So 108 false alarm calls. Those can be a busted fire alarm that goes off until someone comes out to respond. Mostly, we're assuming none of those are. Okay, I want to turn to the committee. Is there anything in these numbers you want to call out specifically that you think deserve more attention from that? Okay. Any questions from the council?
Let me, if I can, just confirm and tell me if this is correct.
Yes.
You know, the predominance on medical calls, where they go out and given the age and the physical condition and medical condition, I can see that. And, and correct me, but do fires break into three categories? And let me take a house fire, one, you know, certainly Rural Metro would show up, the Carefree Fire Department, and then others from surrounding. If you go to the other extreme, a wildfire, that literally, if that gets rolling, take the two in Cave Creek as examples, take the one up by Desert Mountain a decade or so ago, that's more than any, that's more than Scottsdale or Daisy Mountain. I mean, I believe it was something like 40-some units were for the second fire in Cave Creek. So this is, and, and there, a major determinant of bringing it under control is the planes that come over and drop the loads. Is this, this correct? Medical, you know, we have what I would call smaller, isolated fires, and then we have, God forbid, the larger fires, which require massive responses before they get out of control.
Yes, that's a fair assessment, in my understanding of the various events with the fire. Yes, that's a fair assessment in my understanding of the various events that the fire department might respond to. You can see by the data, in brush fire, there were three calls for that at the end of twenty, in fiscal year twenty-one. So three calls, seven calls for brush fires at the end of fiscal twenty, and four the year before that. So, and any one of those run the risk of becoming wildfire. So, so far, we haven't experienced that, but that is a possibility in the area we live in.
Thank you.
Leslie, one question. On the false alarms, they're strictly fire false alarms? Does that include fossil, or like a security alarm goes off in a home and MCSO responds?
No, we'll get to that slide next. These are just fire alarms. These are just alarms that would send our fire personnel.
So it means like nine times a month they go to a fire that's really not a fire. They actually go.
It's not an alarm, it's a false alarm.
Okay, thank you.
To the President, Mayor, Mr. Crane. In the dark of this past, there was a key assess or accepted number of false alarms that care very close to fire and security. And in the council's wisdom, they revealed that some kind of, I think you'll find in the committee recommendations that the committee recommends that that be reduced.
I think it would be interesting to see how many are repeat offenders. That would be interesting. Okay, another top, another day. Thank you.
But it may be worthwhile to make me a list of follow-ups for.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Let me say on this data. So this is the NCSO data at a glance, and there's two categories you can see. One is where a resident has initiated a call, or a business has initiated a call for assistance. The bottom half is where an officer has simply responded of their own volition without a precipitating call for service. You can see the false alarm issue in the first line. It's a significant issue, and actually one that was highlighted by NCSO in their presentation to us. So definitely worthy of perhaps town attention on how to bring that in.
What is the, the welfare check? I don't understand what that is.
So that's a call that say a family member living in Minnesota is trying to reach a loved one here and is not able to, and is concerned for their well-being. They'll call NCSO, and NCSO will go and check on that person. Whenever there's a concern that someone may be at risk or having a problem.
Sure.
So you can see traffic violations in terms of deputy-initiated calls rises to the top. Keeps our deputies and NCSO officers busy with traffic violations. We'll get to this later and at several points, but it bears worth repeating. The committee was aware of other conversations the town has been having with respect to traffic calming solutions. We did not go there. We figured that is happening elsewhere. It was not part of our charge and our time to visit those solutions or make any recommendation or comment to those. But we do acknowledge that the town is working on those issues, and it may begin to show up here. Okay, any questions, anything else the committee would like to add on those stats? Turn this over to Peter Burns.
Mayor, council, members of the audience, thank you for having us. If you thought our task was difficult, by the time we're done, you'll realize how difficult your task will be. I'd also like to recognize the guys from eight twenty-one and eight twenty-five. That's both the Carefree Station and the old Cave Creek Station. Welcome, and I commend you, sir. So, what's influencing things as we're going on now? Well, obviously, the drought and what we saw in Cave Creek two years ago, I guess now, with the wildfires. Also, cost increases, like everything else, things are going up. Even if we were to renew our existing contract with Rural Metro, we're looking at a quarter, about a quarter of a million-dollar annual increase. But Cave Creek has really precipitated a lot of changes. They're obviously are going to a master contract now with Daisy Mountain Fire District and doing away with their subscription services. Now, historically, the dividing line, I understand, or it's been explained to me, dividing line between eight twenty-one, which is Kate, the old Cave Creek engine, and eight twenty, oh.
Carefree, eight twenty-one, right?
Carefree's eight twenty-one, Cave Creek's eight twenty-five. The dividing line was Schoolhouse Road on the north side of the mountain and roughly Fifty-Sixth Street on south side of the mountain. So anything that was east of Schoolhouse, basically, eight twenty-one would respond to. Anything that was west of that, eight twenty-five would respond to. So the big intersection of Cave Creek and Carefree Highway, that would be handled by eight twenty-five. Downtown Bar District, that would be handled by eight twenty-one. So now with Daisy Mountain, and Rural Metro does not have an agreement with Daisy Mountain. Cave Creek Fire Department is going to have to respond to downtown. To give you a sense of what went on in the past, annually, about a hundred and forty calls would go from Carefree into Cave Creek, and about a hundred calls would come from Cave Creek into Carefree. Now there's no agreement between Daisy Mountain and Rural Metro. So our units are going to have to respond to Cave Creek and Carefree Highway. That's pretty close to the six-minute limit that's in our contract. Four minutes is kind of the dispatch metric that people like to use. And in the report, you'll see a plot of where the four-minute response times are for everybody. So, Cave Creek has changed. That eight twenty-five engine is now, as you know, housed in our station on Tom Darlington. There's no mutual aid agreement between Daisy Mountain and recently, Scottsdale just canceled theirs. So we now have two units at the Carefree Station, eight sixty-five, sorry, eight twenty-five. And they serve, I suppose that they serve back up to eight twenty-one as well. But their primary responsibility, as I understand it, the chief soul can clarify that, would be for this, the county island south of Carefree Highway, basically. That's what their primary mission is now. Oh, I have to do this too. Do I get a raise for this too? So what's the difference between mutual aid and automatic aid? Mutual aid, when a department is, needs assistance, the department calls a neighboring department, and it's up to the responding department to decide whether or not they will come to the aid of the calling district. And that's going to be dependent upon any kind, any sort of things, but mostly their current situation. I've come to understand that there is a code amongst the Brotherhood that they will respond at times of need. But the lawyers sometimes get involved, and the town council sometimes get involved, and there, it gets a little bit more difficult than that. The, but I don't think that there's a fireman around that wouldn't respond to a fire if they knew they could go. Assume that to be true. They're like infantrymen or airborne. They go. Automatic aid is a different animal altogether. Under automatic aid, each piece of emergency, each emergency vehicle is equipped with a tracker. So dispatch knows where every piece of equipment in the valley is. When a call comes in, they will dispatch the closest appropriate asset to that call, regardless of jurisdiction boundaries. So if there's a, say, an accident at Cave Creek and Carefree Highway, you might have a City of Phoenix asset deploy. You might have a City of Scottsdale asset deploy. Now you might have Daisy Mountain deploy. Now Rural Metro is not a part of automatic aid. And during our studies, a solicitation was made to automatic aid, governed by an entity called the Life and Safety Council, about what it would take for Carefree to join. And the official response we got back was, all our staffing model's not correct. Rural Metro staffs our engine with three firefighters. The, the normal dispatch for members of automatic aid is four firefighters. However, we always dispatch, as I understand it, we always dispatch an ambulance for the fire, which means that we have three on the engine and two on the ambulance. That gives us two paramedics and three EMTs on every call. Automatic aid might just dispatch an engine, and that engine's going to have two paramedics and two EMTs. So officially, we were turned down because our staffing, the staffing model was wrong. We didn't have appropriate training. Not that the firefighters weren't certified, but we didn't have training in the automatic aid system. Now, these three reasons that we got back are all overcomable, if you will. I mean, they're not showstoppers. We priced, when we were discussing with Rural Metro their cost, to add a fourth firefighter to the engine would cost about a quarter of a million dollars a year. It's not a showstopper. The other thing that we didn't have, which we would have to get if we go into automatic aid, is the communication system. And that, that automatic satellite dispatch thing and blah, 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 that'll cost you about quarter of a million dollars to arrange for the station and all of the equipment and put on the right radio frequencies and all of that sort of stuff. Now unofficially, there was an article in the Foothills Forum where Chief Walker, Assistant Chief with Phoenix PD, Phoenix Fire Department, straight out said that Carefree will never be able to join automatic aid as long as they contract with Rural Metro. Just a fact. And so, while those three official reasons we saw were not showstoppers by any stretch of the imagination, the last one is. So currently, Carefree is an island surrounded on all sides by automatic aid. And that's just what the reality of the situation is.
Did you get the impression that that was any facet of that negotiable?
No.
Yes, you got the impression none of it was negotiable?
I got the distinct message that it is not negotiable. So this next slide is.
Mr. Burns, quick question.
Sure.
You, you mentioned kind of indirectly or unofficially from Phoenix, but what about Scottsdale? Was that also the message that was given that?
Well, we apply to automatic aid, which is a consortium of all the fire districts, fire departments in the valley, basically. They're governed by a life and safety council, which has a certain number of representatives from selected departments. And they make a determination whether or not the entity applying meets their criteria, and they have a set of criteria that goes out there, including best interest or the addition of this new applicant will enhance the system. And, so we applied. Gary sent a letter and said, hello, we'd like to join. And the answer we got was, your staffing's not right, your communications are not right, and your training is not right. And then, like we said, a week later, we see an article in the newspaper that says, as long as you're dealing with Rural Metro, it ain't going to happen.
But you had mentioned that that article was, was quoted from a high-ranking official within Phoenix, and the other objections were overcomable.
Yes, but he is, while he's a high-ranking official with the City of Phoenix, he is, I think, the ED or the overseer of the Life Safety Council. Yes, he is the chairperson of Life Safety Council. So the decisions go through the chairperson.
So to be clear, even if we overcame every objection and we meet their criteria perfectly, we're not eligible.
Well, I, it was Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. I personally was shocked to see the quote in the newspaper, because that's just not something that, it's always, it's just not said. But I think that, you know, reading the tea leaves, I think that if you want to join automatic aid, you can't do it with Rural Metro.
That's what I hear. That's what I've heard.
If you want to appeal that, you can appeal. Rural Metro, prior to us applying, in, I think we were in the late summer, early fall, October. October, Rural Metro had, had applied, I believe, in April or May. And they were turned down as well, pretty summarily. Would, so, you know, good, bad, indifferent. We dealt with that and moved on, accepted the fact that you can spend some time chasing it if you want, but I think.
So, okay, so if, if you can't help, help me to understand now, and maybe Chief Kratz can speak to this as well, but the, what exactly, outside of the other criteria that, that can be fixable, what is the knock against Rural Metro in, in automatic aid, in that partnership?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Delicio?
Vince is fine.
Vince. The, I think that, for example, the arguments that you will hear will be that, A, to do that with Rural Metro runs into a gifting problem prohibited by the Constitution, that a municipality is benefiting a private corporation by providing this assistance. That's one argument you'll hear. The second argument that you'll hear will be liability, that somehow there's some enhanced liability in dealing with a private corporation. The official reason for termination of the mutual aid between Scottsdale and Carefree was straight out, it's just not in the best interest of Scottsdale.
Do you want to ask a question about that?
You have to go through the chair, as far as I'm concerned.
So, so I have a question on the letter from Scottsdale canceling our mutual aid agreement. So they're no longer going to come when called. We called them nine times in fifteen years. Is that true? They're not going to come? And let me follow up before you try to answer that. What criteria are they going to use to determine if they're going to come? And how's that different than what they've done the past fifteen years? I don't know if you'll know all that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Geiger, I, I think that you will find that Chief Shannon has emphasized on more than one occasion that if it is indeed a life and safety issue, they would probably respond. If it's merely a property issue, they may not respond. Their criteria will be what other commitments, what kind of backup do they have to put in place in order to release a piece of equipment or multiple pieces of equipment to deal with, within the circumstances?
Is that any different than what they've been doing the past fifteen years?
I don't know what the decision process has been. I, I grew up in the military, and in military, when there's something happening somewhere in the world, everybody gets on the balls of their feet. I suspect pretty much the same with firefighters. If they know that there's something burning, they get on the balls of their feet, and they're ready to go.
Well, I'm looking at this as we're being asked to assess a lot of risk here. Risk of not having backup on our fire, balanced with financial risk. And then I, you see the report, by the way, it was a terrific report, great information, tells the whole story. I counted up medical calls, snake removal and false alarms is eighty-seven percent of the calls. Sixty percent are medical.
I, I can't believe that, because sixty, about sixty percent are medical calls.
Yeah, so I mean. Yeah, so I mean, how do we assess? How much risk are we really taking on? If we have, don't have a formal mutual aid agreement, are they going to let us burn?
It sounds to me like there might be a lag time. So with automatic aid, they just send. Am I correct? And then with mutual aid, they have to call and someone has to make the decision of who's going to respond and when they're going to respond. So that lag time could be the danger.
Correct.
But what concerns me, and I don't know if this is the case, is the false security of knowing, oh, we're on automatic aid, we need help with fire, we've got all these agencies. But really what we need is EMTs and paramedics having the ambulance come with the fire truck.
What, a lot of people get confused about this. We, the current arrangement here in Cave Creek can, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, typically, automatic aid has four firefighters, two EMTs and two paramedics.
Right.
Okay. In Carefree, we have three firefighters on the truck, one paramedic, two EMTs. But we dispatched the ambulance with it, which has one paramedic and one EMT.
Right.
Okay, uh. In terms of ambulance, when you think of ambulance, you might be thinking of transporting from the scene to a hospital. That's not emergency services. That's transport. That's what's covered by the certificate of necessity. So the transporting of patients from the scene or from one facility to another is covered by the CON. The emergency medical services that are just performed, traffic accident, fire, other kind of accident. That's by the paramedics. And in theory, that responsibility ends when you load them in an ambulance to send to a better facility.
Is that a fair assessment of the situation? I'm just trying to understand that.
Well, hey, believe me, there's a lot to understand.
No, I'm just trying to understand that what we currently have is we get free, we get a fire truck with three personnel on it. We get an ambulance with two personnel on it. Sixty percent of our calls are medical.
Right.
We go to automatic aid, which is, we push there, that's obvious. Now we're going to have no ambulance, we're going to have four firemen, of which two are
Paramedics.
Paramedics.
But, but it could be, it could be two engines, it could be three engines, it could be five engines, it could be a rescue team. It could be a hazmat team. It depends on what you described on the call to dispatch. What's close and what gets dispatched. It's not just, you know, one horse drawn fire truck.
Thank you.
But it, there is a difference. And right now we are an island that on all sides of us except to north is automatic aid participants. Phoenix, Scottsdale, Daisy Mountain.
And Scottsdale cut us off and Daisy Mountain said, no, even though it's in their best interest to work with us.
The formal discussions are between rural metro and the municipality, not between Scottsdale and Cave, Carefree. Uh, yes.
So Excuse me, Mr. Burns, I have a question. So a lot of the comments that Councilman Geiger made would be well answered by uh, chief from Scottsdale or the chief from Daisy Mountain. So are there any representatives here tonight from those four departments? Are they on the phone, Gary?
Uh, I don't know if they're on the phone.
So they didn't, they didn't join us tonight?
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Crane, uh, I, I think that would best be served in a different forum than this right now. Let us just convey, get you up to speed where we understand the world. And, and I don't mean to be insightful, and I don't think this is, well, I know.
With a C.
We have trucks parked outside. Yes, I know.
I have another question, another comment. The minutes from your, the last public safety committee meeting talked about Chief Soul getting together with Chief Shannon from Scottsdale, talk about some of these issues. And I think the results of that discussion would be a good indication. Just to put to rest, if there's any hope at all of rural metro being able to engage with the city of Scottsdale.
Chief Soul's here, would you like to hear?
Chief Soul, what came of that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, so I have had limited opportunities to meet with Chief Shannon and he, and, and he, to his uh, you know, re, at his request, he, Scottsdale's been very busy with a lot of public events. We have had the opportunity to have some discussions however, and I did go to present at the Scottsdale council meeting. And had the uh, decision to pull the mutual aid agreement pulled from the consent agenda openly discussed with Council, myself, Chief Shannon and Chief I can say from that meeting, there was a commitment made verbally by Council as well as of what stage of a fire, if you don't have fire control, there's a life safety issue. And they would send resources if available, which is no different than uh, when you asked about earlier, our prior mutual aid agreement. So there is no distinction in that process, but go to dispatch. They would contact the battalion chief on duty in Scottsdale. If there are resources available, they would send them. So there would be no difference technically between how that request would be processed. And there was also a, a declaration by the mayor to Chief Shannon and the city administrator to look at a new mutual aid agreement. So, that's what I
Okay, great. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Peter, if I could ask a question in this regards. Help me understand, it's, it's my understanding that Cave Creek currently employs eleven firefighters who were previously from rural metro.
Mr. Mayor, uh, that's my understanding. They had all attended an abbreviated academy. Which got them up to speed on, uh, well, probably refresher generally, but also got them up to speed on automatic aid dispatch, automatic aid incident control, automatic aid chain of command, yada, yada. You know, a lot of that was focused on integrating them into the automatic aid system. That's my understanding.
But, that's mine as well. The other facet of it, Matt, is I don't know what recourse we have. I mean, I've talked to some of the other mayors and it isn't, frankly, they're not about to overrule their fire chiefs. So here we are, okay?
Yeah. You know, you can, I'm sorry. My chairman called.
I just want to add something to this. Prior to this committee convening, none of us had ever heard of mutual aid or automatic aid. So the information that you're receiving is, is, are going to school on this information and hearing as laypeople as well and I absorb it. Point one, point two. So much has changed in the last month. I mean, it required us to revisit our recommendations a month ago. We spent so much play that every time we turn around, it's a different conversation and different understanding. My concern is when we release this report out of the gate, even as a point in time, it could very well be that information will change that. The next conversation will change that understanding. So I think that's really important as we perceive this. Definitely is what, yeah.
I think you mentioned that, I think you mentioned that uh, if the council were to view, would take to view that mutual aid is a factor of policy by not being a real policy, by not, by not being a legal policy. Uh, our prior recommendations that are now in the appendix made the assumption that mutual aid was actually in place. So we would refer you there if you choose to take that attitude.
If I may, I'd like to make a comment with respect to what Tony observed, and I did the same thing, is we have sixty-two percent of calls from medical, seems like no matter where our decision goes, whatever avenue we go down. We need to make sure there's a bias towards having medical equipment and resources. Cause our, our community needs that more so than fire trucks per se. We have, you know, an older community and we have to make sure we, we service them with the right equipment. And sixty-two percent is a big number. Big number.
I think that's right. Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Um, what, what you tee up for us is, you know, we have safety. And what percentage, I mean, God forbid we lose a resident because we said a couple dollars more, we could have. You know, that's what we're
An insurance policy, Mr. Mayor. You're buying insurance. It could, that, that's why sixty percent of the residents of Cave Creek never subscribe to rural metro. They only had a forty percent participation rate in their subscription service over there. So.
And we had sixty.
We had sixty twenty years ago, fifteen years
But now we're, we're at a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, the master
The bill comes to the town. Okay, thank you.
Oh, quick, quick question. I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, for Gary.
This is like dealing with the five phases of death, you know? There's anger, bargaining, negotiation, depression. Eventually you'll get to acceptance.
Gary, Gary, help, I'm not going to accept this. Uh, Gary, who's, who sits on this Life Safety Council in Phoenix?
So the Life Safety Council essentially the, uh, chiefs or deputy fire chiefs from the various fire departments. So mainly municipal fire departments, there are several fire districts, Sun City Fire District, Daisy Mountain Fire District. Uh, but it's the uh, respective administrative chiefs from each one of those agencies.
And we're talking statewide? Is this a statewide agency or is it?
So, automatic aid is unique to the metropolitan area. The rest of the state actually deals with mutual aid. Um, so you might see on the evening news, a fire that happened in, in rural Arizona. And you might see uh, several different uh, uh, names on, on the side of, of the fire trucks there. That's through mutual aid response. Uh, if you recall recently over the holidays, there was a mutual aid response in Colorado with the fire that went through the town of Superior there that burnt a thousand homes unfortunately. That was also a mutual aid response in which neighbors help neighbors. This is what first responders do. But, you know, it's, it's shocking when, when you hear this, you know, you don't think first responders are no responders if you don't play with the set of rules in automatic aid, but that's the way it is. That's the way the system's set up. So, uh, if we are to join automatic aid, we have to play by the rules that they have adopted. Um, it is a good system. Um, it is better than, than, than mutual aid in that it's automatic and, and you don't have to call and, and wait. So time is of an essence in, in emergencies. But uh, the, the level of service dictates higher costs and, and it's a significant amount uh, for a small community such as Carefree.
Put up another slide here. And this slide is during the process, we thought it'd be a good idea to take a look at, you know, the scope of services. Uh, and we were really basically talking to rural metro. And they all made presentations to us, rural metro, Daisy Mountain and City of Scottsdale. Uh, City of Phoenix, I think, just declined or I don't even know if we contacted them, but um, so we asked for ballpark cost. That's the way we phrased it. And, and kind of a scope of services. And uh, we did get, I will say that uh, uh, obviously rural metro responded with a number. Uh, Daisy Mountain and Scottsdale both did as well. Um, and uh, uh, we tried to drill down with uh, um, the chiefs and the representatives from the other two districts, municipality departments. Um, and we kind of got a little bit of pushback because, and admittedly, they had devoted some substantial uh, staff time to putting all this together to provide to us. And I think there was a little bit of hesitancy because ten years ago, they responded to a request for qualifications. Uh, both Scottsdale, Daisy Mountain. I don't think Phoenix did, and rural metro did, and they didn't get it. And they kind of took a little bit of an attitude that unless the council comes forward and says, we want to join automatic aid by resolution, you know, and maybe even get specific to say Daisy Mountain or Scottsdale. They provided enough information to make some decisions. So this is kind of a compilation of what we got, okay? It's not definitive. And one of the things that you're going to see in our recommendations is we're really not sure what all in costs are to go to automatic aid. We just, we haven't had those kind of brass tacks kind of negotiations. So uh, one time startup cost, you see Daisy Mountain, there'll be half a million dollars. This is, I, I wouldn't take this to the bank necessarily, but uh, one time startup cost half a million for Daisy Mountain, six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the city of Scottsdale. Um, and to a large, well, then, um, that's really going to be covering that startup cost is going to be covering the comm systems, which is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the personnel costs associated with sending fifteen or so firefighters through the academy. Because they got to get paid for that time and somebody's got to backfill them and all of that sort of stuff. Um, uh, the uh, ongoing cost, you see that rural metro is a million eight five. Uh, Daisy Mountain was two point four million and Scottsdale was two point eight million. And some of that difference has to do with the, the three versus four staffing levels. For example, you see that with rural metro, we have three firefighters, as I said before, if we would put a fourth one on the truck, that's three shifts. Uh, that'll cost you a quarter of a million dollars. Additional money to that. Uh, we asked about inflators. Uh, rural metro gave us uh, a firm price for three years and then an inflation cost based on the labor cost, they're going to have a negotiation sometime during that period. And we were looking at a five year kind of a deal, three to five years. Uh, uh, Daisy Mountain said up to five percent. I think that they come from up to five percent because they're fire district. Fire district's primary source of revenue is the property tax. Property valuations can grow five percent per year. The maximum tax rate on the fire districts is four dollars and twenty, three dollars? Four dollars?
Three forty-three.
Three forty-five maybe. So they kind of figure in that all valuation is going to grow by five percent. Therefore, their budget will grow by five. I don't know that five percent's a real hard number. Um, and for the city of Scottsdale, that's
Excuse me, so Daisy Mountain could potentially go higher than five percent on an annual basis?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we haven't had that kind of discussion. We did look at the Cave Creek contract that was signed. And there was no discussion of escalator clauses in there. Which is one of the things that caused the committee to pause, uh, you know? This, this gets back to what is the all in cost? And what are we looking at down the future? So, you know, and understandably from the two districts, they don't want to be used as a foil for Carefree to beat up rural metro to lower their price. You know, they got, quote, better things to do, you know? I mean, they're running the big city. But he's got still, they're doing, anyway, um. They talked about the staffing, uh, training, we would have to do that additional training if we brought on uh, one of the other two entities. Um, the startup costs, I talked about comp costs, other, other issues that we really don't know because you know, you want to solve the big thing in the middle of the room and not all the little things. But rural metro provides us fire inspection, fire marshal, uh, emergency manager, hydrant But Rural Metro provides us fire inspection, fire marshal, emergency manager, hydrant inspections, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all services that are included in the contract now. We never got to that point, okay? I know that, for example, Cave Creek is doing their own plan reviews for fire right now. They took that in-house. Whereas before, I think Rural Metro was doing it. So we don't know what that. And as I said, we really couldn't get into what the hard all-in costs are going to be going in or on an annual basis and what the scope of work would be. And again, I understand from the jurisdiction's point of view, when you get serious, come talk to us. If you're just playing us, that's good enough. You got an idea of what you're gonna do. Just to give you some sense, we have a fire truck, Carefree. For Cave Creek's contract, they're also buying a brush truck as part of the contract. They're buying a fire truck and a brush truck and the brush truck will be staffed on a part-time basis. So that's in addition to, and I think those numbers would pretty much hold true if you moved it over. They also in Cave Creek have on the schedule within three to five years to buy a tanker truck, which will also have a crew and also have equipment, and I'll talk about that in a minute. One of my fears in going into this, we know the farthest, where we had a hundred calls, you know, based upon the Rural Metro data when we had the two stations, we had a hundred calls coming in to Carefree. And I suspect that most of those are on the west side of the mountain. You know, I mean, that's closer station, eight twenty-five was a close station. I'm just, what I don't know is the Life Safety Council considers the enhancements that you bring to the system. Okay, I've heard enhancements that we might provide could be as much as splitting a battalion chief. Three ways, because Scottsdale would like to have a little different arrangement in terms of how many stations report to a battalion chief. You could be a brush truck, could be a tanker truck, could be a new station. I just don't know and you're not gonna get there until you're actually standing in front of Life Safety Council and having that discussion. But it's one of the things that's out there. Okay, so that's just kind of comparing apples and apples. This the contract ending, the current one that ends this fiscal year is a million five. Under the proposal we got from Rural Metro, it's gonna be a million eight-five-nine, so a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar increase. Daisy Mountain, that would be seven hundred, and this is operating cost, this is not capital cost. Daisy Mountain, again, these are ballpark numbers. I don't know that they're gonna fall on their sword on these numbers, that they can't go down. They might go up, they could go sideways. It's not negotiation, we want ballpark to consider.
Wouldn't it be fair, just as we're looking at this again, trying to assess all this, that the Rural Metro numbers are probably fairly firm, but that the Scottsdale and the Daisy Mountain likely are a little light?
I don't know. I would think that Rural Metro are firmer than the other two entities. Daisy Mountain, when I did a takeoff of the contract that Cave Creek approved, they were coming in about the same, the issues that I saw jumping up was, do you need a brush truck? Do you need an extra crew for the brush fire season? Will you need a tanker truck? You know, but that's, and when we get to it, you need somebody that understands fire. You got a bunch of Joe blows here and Jane blows, sitting around going, woo, fire trucks.
Can I just say that we do like a geographic area of Carefree versus Cave Creek is substantial?
Not only that, we have more fire hydrants than does Cave Creek. So you need somebody that understands fire risk and can talk turkey to resolve these issues. You don't need, you know, a budget guy.
But it's.
You do at this point, yeah.
Well, you might need a budget guy, but you also need a fire guy.
Agreed. Well, it seems as though we're a long ways off of finding out what Daisy Mountain and Scottsdale's really gonna charge us. But there's, you know, we list costs, et cetera, new capital outlays, so we really don't know where we are with those two.
I would say based on the, what I saw, based on what the contract to Cave Creek signed, the Daisy Mountain numbers are probably not gonna change except for items like, do you need a brush truck? Do you need a tanker truck? Then you need crews. And you, and then you're gonna dicker over, are they gonna do hydrant inspections? Are they gonna do fire inspection? Are they gonna charge extra to go to an event? You know, all of that sort of stuff was the nickel and dimes, not the big rocks in the middle of the room. I think Scottsdale, given the fact, the way that the two presentations of costs came in, I would say that they're pretty. There is a couple of budget guy, we go, yeah, right, a contingency, come on, you know, that kind of stuff. But you're gonna staff with fifteen people. You know what the staffing cost on average is for an FTE firefighter? And a cap firefighter, an engineer, which this guy is, a firefighter, an engineer and a captain, right? You know what a battalion chief is gonna cost. Then you can dicker over whether he needs an assistant, whether he needs a vehicle and da-da-da-da-da, you know. But we own an engine, we'll talk about that a little bit more. This is, I'm the happy news here. I think the numbers are pretty close except for major capital kinds of things. Cave Creek went in and they renovated, I think, didn't they renovate the station over there in Cave Creek? After they, I don't, I was under that impression that they did, so that kind of stuff. So this slide talks about MCSO law enforcement. We're paid, we pay that out of the general fund. That's about plus or minus half a million dollars a year. Everybody seems to be happy. We're a very low crime area when the biggest thing that's knocking on your door is, you know, speed bumps and crosswalks. You're doing, you're not murderers and bank robberies and all that kind of stuff. Fire, fires funded by the one percent sales tax, we're gonna talk later, one percent doesn't cover it. And that's before we have a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase from Rural Metro. Operating costs under all three scenarios are up over what we have now. And what we have now is not paid for by the one percent sales tax. Financing. Two components, capital, Carefree owns its own engine, that's good news. The bad news, it's currently fifteen years old. It was built by the La France company. Well, La France company's out of business. Parts are getting harder to find. Fifteen years is about the depreciation schedule for a fire truck. So you, regardless of who we go with, you better plan on three-quarters of a million dollars for a new fire truck. I mean, that's just kind of, that's some tea leaves. If you have to go with a brush truck, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus seventy-five thousand dollars worth of equipment. So that's another quarter of a million dollars and then you'd have to staff it. If you have to go for a tanker truck, there are people that would know better than I would, but I'm just looking off the Cave Creek contract. Tanker truck is four hundred fifty thousand dollars with a hundred fifty thousand dollars of equipment and that needs to have staff. So, you know, there's some big ticket items that are coming. Oh, am I, I'm behind? Okay, then we're ready here. We were on that slide, but now we're, I think, yes, we're. Let's talk about just your budget, your finances. Where does the city sit? And this is very high-level review. I didn't believe you, I have enough hours in this job already, and although he's doubled my salary three times, it still doesn't seem like a lot. So basically what you're dealing with, you have seven million dollars in revenue a year. This is based on FY twenty-two budget. You got seven million dollars in revenue. Eighty percent of it's local. Three percent sales tax generates three and three-quarters million dollars. Then you got some user fees and some interest revenues that's just short two million dollars. So that gets you to five point six million dollars and the other twenty percent of your revenue is state shared revenue. That's about a million four. That gets you to your seven million. Now, the one thing that you have to consider on state shared revenues is that most of those are distributed by population. Carefree is pretty well built out. I don't think you're ever gonna see Carefree's population go from thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred, whatever it is, to ten thousand. Probably not gonna happen, but you'll see the state of Arizona go from seven million to eight million to nine million. Well, your percentage of the population is going this way, which means your state shared revenues, given any, forgetting any intervention, is gonna be declining. So, you know, your revenues are kind of tight. Sales, you have no property tax. Sales tax is very volatile from month to month, and I'll talk about that in a second. So without a property tax, it's no wonder that your economic development priorities are focused on the sales tax. Because that's your bread and butter. That's where you're gonna get your revenue and that's what you gotta pursue. So this is all a setup for something here. This just talks about what your sales tax. If you look at the left-hand, the chart on the left, that's your annual collections from fiscal year ten to fiscal year twenty-one. And during that time period, you had three years of negative growth and you had three years of double-digit growth. At FY twenty-one, just past recent, it was astounding growth, thirty-five percent. And if you look at the right-hand graph, we couldn't even put that monthly collection onto the chart because it would make the rest of it look ridiculous. So the peak there in June of twenty-one, as you can see, you're averaging about between three and four hundred thousand dollars a month. In June of twenty-one, you collected a million dollars. Partner revenue gave you a million dollars. Now, some people say, well, that's the pandemic, you know, that everybody went to Lowe's. And some say, well, no, it's everybody ordering on Amazon and your mail order and the tax, just so that all that mail order finally hit home. I don't know. I mean, I haven't delved into it that deeply, but is that the new normal or is that a blip? That's why you get paid the big bucks to make that call when you're in the budget process. So your June of twenty-one was pretty extraordinary. So your eighty percent of your revenue, which is, you know, your local revenue, eighty percent of your local revenue is sales tax. And trying to forecast that, I was in the business forecasting that, and on this level, it's really hard unless you call up your vendors, you know, your businesses and say, tell me what you pay. Anyway, where it comes from, if you look, retail is thirty-five percent of your sales tax. Construction is eighteen percent and as I understand it, most of that goes into your capital fund. Looking for a nod from Gary. Accommodations are eleven percent and restaurant and bars are seven percent, so seventy percent of all of your sales tax is tied up in those four categories, retail, construction, accommodation and restaurant bars. On a volatile base. So looking at your fire fund, this is your fire fund from FY oh-seven. FY oh-seven was the first year of the contract. Back percent sales tax in, in two thousand and five, built up a big cash balance and could use fire fund to pay the full contract costs for the first three years. After the cash balance was expired, you were subsidized, you are subsidizing with the general fund, the fire fund to pay for fire services to the tune on average about four hundred thousand dollars a year up until FY twenty-one, when you had the million-dollar month. Okay, so, you know, you look at that and you go, oh, well, we're in the new normal and we're gonna get a million five for the fire fund every year and it's just gonna be copacetic. But even if we, well, even if we got the million five, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cut the nut. So one of the things that's really good about the town of Carefree's finances is you got a capital fund. And basically your capital fund is funded by excess revenues over expenditures. And I, as I understand it, your construction sales tax, because you always think that's a one-time shot, goes into the. Been growing since two thousand and fifteen. And what that indicates is the town has taken a pretty conservative approach to the budgeting. Your revenues are in excess of your expenditures in terms of operating. So I think this last year, your revenues, your FY twenty-two budget was eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars revenues in excess of expenditures. Well, so you all, as I understand it, have a policy to maintain a two-and-a-half million dollar balance as a rainy day fund in there. So from your thirteen point eight million, which is not, that's pretty good. Two and a half million comes off the top for a rainy day fund. You are right now in the process of considering your capital improvement project plan. As I scanned it real briefly, it looked like you had seven million dollars in there for roads and streets. And that's probably the primary purpose of that besides the rainy day fund. So, and I also saw a whole lot of listings for economic development projects that I don't know what the price tag is and at this point, I don't think you do either. So, but you also have used that for this capital improvement fund, you built a fire station with it, you bought the fire truck with it, I think you buy the scuba, not the scuba, that's the. Yeah, the breathing apparatus, that was a hundred thousand dollars, I think, we just replaced all those out there. That comes out of here. So now, besides the seven million for new roads and streets, and I don't know whether that's a hundred percent, that's fifty percent, that's seventy-five percent of your road and speech, whatever, you're looking at three-quarters of a million dollars for a fire truck. You can pay me now, you can pay me later, but you're gonna buy a fire truck. If you have to buy a brush truck, that's another quarter of a million dollars. If you go automatic aid, that's another quarter of a million dollars just for the radio gear to get set up. So there probably is some room in your capital fund there, but, you know, Cave Creek, I think their equivalent fund was like thirty-one million dollars. So they could take a lot of what they were doing, buying a fire station, buying a fire truck, buying all, right out of the cash balance. Now, they've got some other little things going on with respect to how they're gonna pay for that, but their contract with all that. So, one way to get to the end, takeaways, what you should learn from what I try to say. I don't know what the full cost of joining, we don't know what the full cost of joining automatic aid is. Potential partners have declined, you know, going to the table until we make some higher level of commitment. But you're gonna have ongoing costs, you're gonna have capital cost. Minimum capital cost for, or automatic aid, minimum capital cost is five hundred thousand dollars. This doesn't count the three-quarters of a million dollars for a fire truck. This is just, you know, the basics to get the academy and the radio gear. Ongoing minimum cost is an eight hundred thousand dollar increase over what you're paying now. That's from the million five to members two seventy-five or something like that anyway. Your existing fire, your basic, your primary town revenue, the sales tax is very volatile. Your state revenues are likely to decline over time. I don't know how fast.
Construction sales tax also.
Probably, well, who knows? How's my neighbor, I mean, who knows? I, the real estate market is beyond me now. There are no fundamentals. So the existing fire fund is inadequate, you can't rely on that. Your capital fund can assist in one time, but probably not for ongoing cost. Um, and you still have to keep that fund viable for future capital cost. You know, just when you redo your roads in the next two or three years, that's, you're going to, I'm in a homeowner association, we got to build that fund reserve fund up in order to do all this stuff. Um, so just to give you a sense of perspective, for the last ten years, deposits into the fund have exceeded the first year operating cost for rural metro six times. So six times you've deposited enough to pay for the increase of the operating cost. For Daisy Mountain, you've deposited enough to cover four times. Or four times you've deposited more than the increase. At first Scottsdale, you deposited, um, two times to pay for the increased cost, and that is without inflators. I can't tell you what the inflator is going to be three years, five years. So, so with that very cheery review of the finances, I will turn it over to Sheila.
Okay, so I'm going to take you through the options for additional funding. And then we will end it with, um, Leslie talking about the recommendations. So we're, we're close to the end here. So, I think my two colleagues here did a great job of explaining all the hard work that we did. And we did all the deep dive research and the groundwork to make these recommendations. And as Leslie mentioned, a lot of things shifted over the last couple of months. But our work stands on its own, stands on its own. And we, um, you know, we did the deep dive, you saw all the charts. I mean, this is the information that you would need to make a decision. But there's more to come, as we have found out. So looking at options for additional funding, there are two viable options. Um, we looked for more, but in my experience, pretty much property taxes and sales taxes make up the revenues for local governments. It's very common. It's a way to diversify revenues and bring more balance to a budget instead of just relying on one or the other. Now, there are obviously, like everything in life, each of these options have, um, advantages and drawbacks. And so we're going to start to go through some of those right now. From a sales tax perspective, we'll start there. Um, the sales tax is pretty simple and straightforward. It is already in place for the one percent sales tax for the, uh, that we just talked about. It also is something that will grow over time. I mean, you saw volatility, but the trend was up. Um, however, in a recession, you know, well, it will flatline or come down. We'll get to that in a minute. Now, from a drawback perspective, the tax is not very well aligned with the benefits received for fire protection. So for example, a part-time resident needs fire protection a hundred percent of the time. They may not be here a hundred percent of the time. And if they're not here, they're not shopping in Carefree and contributing to the sales tax. And as I mentioned, sales taxes grow with the economy, but they can also fall. We had a couple of periods where there were negative growth. And that's not a very good characteristics to have if you're looking at a fixed cost like the fire, um, contract. And also, we want to be competitive with our neighbors. So if our sales tax were to substantially exceed our neighbor's sales taxes, then we would be potentially putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage and driving people to shop elsewhere. So what we should be doing is making sure that we incentivize people to shop in Carefree. Just looking at, from a competitive perspective of our neighbors, once again, there's accounting tax and a state tax as well as our city tax. So you can see that at nine point three percent, we are on parity with Cave Creek. However, in my book, Scottsdale is substantially lower, eight point oh five percent. That's a lot on a big ticket item. And Phoenix is also low, lower than us at eight point six percent. Now, looking at, trying to put the, the sales tax numbers into play here on, on what we are estimated or the kind of beginning costs would be for each one of our potential providers. You can see that with rural metro, we would need to increase the sales tax by point three three percent, bringing our total sales tax combined up to nine, percent, bringing our total sales tax up to ten percent. And if we were to go to Scottsdale, it would have to be a one point oh five percent increase, bringing our total tax up to ten point three five percent. Now, looking at property taxes, as I mentioned earlier, property taxes and sales taxes combined create a much more balanced budget. But property taxes are used, um, typically for critic, to pay for critical services. And I'll get into that in a minute. So on the advantage side, it's obviously closely aligned with the general perception that the cost for fire protection should be correlated with the size of a structure as well as the value of a structure being protected. It is generally a more stable source of revenue. It's largely immune to that pre-writer problem that we discussed earlier, where part-time residents will be paying their share of fire protection, whether they're in residence or not. And then in order to give people some comfort about the potential for runaway property taxes, the legislature has placed limits on the, uh, and transparency requirements on the property tax. And back in two thousand and twelve, they changed the laws. Property tax on an annual basis, two percent increase. There's a five percent limit on the increase in the value of your property. So if your property went up ten percent, the only taxable portion could be up five percent. So that's the max. It's capped there. And then there's the truth in taxation process, which essentially means that there is a public notice, several public notices put out describing what a new tax would be and what it would cost like an average property holder, as well as a public hearing. So they wanted it to be transparent and make sure everybody understands what everybody is understanding. And then it does require voter approval. No, no one is going to impose a ta, a property tax on anybody. It does require voter approval. Now, the drawbacks is that it's unpopular. Uh, people I think are afraid of that runaway tax problem, but I think that the state legislature has taken a good portion, care, care of that. Uh, we currently do not have a property tax. It will need approval from the town council as well as voters and, um, Carefree. And with the levy limits imposed by, escalator in any master contract, though, once again, we don't know what that will be. Trying to take the property tax numbers and put them to, uh, the fire contract. So the second line down, um, with the property tax rates. So for rural metro, if we were to solely use a property tax to pay for the fire contract, it would be a dollar three. For Daisy Mountain, it would be a dollar thirty-two. And for Scottsdale, it would be a dollar fifty-nine. Now, if we were to combine a property tax with the current sales tax, it would be a property tax rate of twenty-five cents for rural metro, fifty-four cents for Daisy Mountain, and for Scottsdale, eighty-two cents. Looking at our neighbors and their property tax levels, um, we can see with Phoenix, um, the primary and secondary taxes at two twelve, basically, just over a dollar in Scottsdale. Um, both Carefree and Cave Creek currently do not have a property tax. And the subscription service for Daisy Mountain is three forty-seven.
And I'm turning it over to Leslie too. Wow. Great summary and overview. Okay, we're going to talk about where this all left us in the process and what we move forward in our recommendations to the council on. So we, um, originally, as I mentioned, had adopted four recommendations in early January based on the information that we had available to us at that point in time. And I want to say that this committee, a very diverse folks, coming from all these different perspectives, was unanimous in our, uh, support and adoption of these recommendations. And I thought that was really significant and spoke highly of the process that we'd engaged in to get to that point. We felt so strongly about those original recommendations that we included them in the report anyway as an appendix. So we didn't want to lose track of what we thought was the most prudent way forward based on the information. However, the new information that started to come to light, the new conversations that were happening with Scottsdale, the aforementioned, uh, newspaper article, um, around the life safety decision. Those started to come together where we felt it just wasn't going to be responsible enough of us to go forward with our original recommendations. And we needed to offer you something to bridge that based on this new information. So we've, we have, we came back, we revisited those January twenty-first based on that. Um, as a citizen advisory group, we took that charge very much to heart. Um, we, we went to town, we went to school on all of this data and everything you heard. And everything that's included in that report is, um, nothing that we all walked in, no. So we really took to heart that our role was to gather and assess the data, to document the story and to provide you this independent citizen input and to the next steps. What we really tried to avoid and be very fair with was to resist the political pressures. We did not feel equipped nor did our role to navigate and negotiate the politics of this situation. And they felt fierce at times. So we feel that, um, we've offered in this report what we hope and what we believe to be, um, fair and consistent, um, information and data for you to make a decision on. But we did not navigate or come down on the political side of things. So hopefully that's what comes through on that. So with that preference, we offer three recommendations. The first one is to recommend that the town contract with a consultant, um, a fire and emergency services professional, who, and that could be somebody at a fire chief level or someone with extensive background, who can assist the town uh, to transition to automatic aid, should that be the town's choice. Um, but to navigate that process, to both hold those discussions, to be able to negotiate the upcoming contracts and to take into account the current risk profile for the town, but also an ability to assess um, and speak to the financial strength or issues of any potential contract partner. So someone to walk us through that. And we recommend that a consultant be engaged to take that to the next level. Recommendation two, again, to engage a consultant, um, this time with a financial, um, uh, background and financial expertise that can help the town navigate the choices that both Peter and Sheila outlined and touched on. Um, and what might be the most appropriate strategy for the town going forward and how it, it, uh, funds fire service and our MCSO or law enforcement contract as well, holding public safety services as one. So, um, we thought it would be useful. It's proven useful, I believe, in Cave Creek. So we're kind of taking a page from their playbook, if you will, to bring in some outside expertise and perspective um, to help with those. And to do a full scope look at potential options for funding this and a deeper dive perhaps on both the sales tax and property tax options. Recommendation three is specific to the, uh, MCSO contract. Um, we recommend that the current level of service and the current contract continue with MCSO. There was no question there for all the reasons that we touched on. We do recommend that the council consider revisiting and re-establishing the license requirements and penalties for alarm systems. This may be true both in fire and law enforcement. And we believe this might help curb that and therefore reduce some of the demands that we see on our law enforcement personnel. Thinking that's happening elsewhere, but we do acknowledge that that work will have, um, an effect and perhaps reduce um, demands for law enforcement presence and Carefree. Okay. And with that, I want to turn to my esteemed colleagues for a couple of reasons. But first of all, to say, are there any final comments that you committee members would like to add to our work and to our recommendations?
One thing I don't know, though, the council knows that rural metro obviously is a private corporation. It is the only fire district, fire department in the entire metro area that is a private corporation. All these other people are subject to their, uh, either council members or whatever, or their recommendations or how their services are paid for. And I might, uh, offer, include something that, well, there, of course, going to be a big step for us to have to consider.
Well, I want to thank each of you for this, uh, you, our fellow feedback and experience. And I enjoyed it very much. And I'll miss you. We'll see each other along the way. And I've been involved in a lot of citizen advisory efforts, um, of this sort. And I think this is really one of the top experiences I've had. Um, we, we worked together well. I don't think we suffered from anything too much. I think we got through, we had healthy faith. And, um, I'm very proud to offer this work on behalf of this committee and to the council for the duration. And I think we're done.
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the entire committee. I think you've done an outstanding job of getting, getting us a long way up the line on understanding a very complex and not always rational, um, situation. So that concludes item number two. Thank you. Like to go on to item number three, review, discussion, and possible action.
Mayor, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak now would be the appropriate time.
You are correct. Public comments. Are there any questions, comments, thoughts? We're going to be going out for open houses. Sir, would you please come up to the podium?
Hey, uh, just a morning, uh, twenty-three-year resident of Carefree. Um, I'm very impressed by the report I read today. As a matter of fact, I saw my email. I saw the, we done into the report. I'm very impressed. So, thank you. Um, couple of comments that I have is, uh, the mention about, um, enhancements, like could, could be considered an enhancement, like a brush truck or whatever it is. But that's a capital improvement, additional enhancement. But like negative things could be enhancements too, like for instance, Like for instance, snake removal, there's lots of calls on snake removal. A enhancement that's actually a, like a negative enhancement could be to privatize that. Okay? And, uh, that privatizing something like that could reduce the busyness of the regular fire responders in less need for mutual aid, which might reduce the mutual aid premium, you might say, or cost of it. That's another comment that I have. And, uh, final comment is, there's lots of options here and, you know, lots of things that need to be considered. And one option, one thing that needs to be considered is like the, the property tax. That's a big, like third part things that needs to be considered. First of all, is there a block to that option? Like, why are we considering it if there might be a block? I don't know what the feeling is of the town council. But if there's like three people here that are opposed to a property tax, it's a blocking situation. So that whole line of discussion can be handled in just a couple of minutes' time by a raise of hands or maybe you need to do your, you know, your gauge or, you know, take a voter, you know, opinion survey or something. I, I don't know. But if there's three people that are blockers, then that can be quickly disposed of as a blocking situation. So anyway, I need that up to you guys to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What we have to worry about is Carefree and not just 2022 to 25. We have to worry about a 25 to 30, 30 to 35. And with the discussion about the, you know, state revenue shares most likely declining for us because our population is not going to grow as fast as the state of Arizona. We have to seriously consider the sustainability of the budget on a very volatile revenue stream such as sales tax, which is pretty much like putting all of your eggs in one basket. Now, what I saw in my career financing municipal infrastructure was many times where cities would get into deficit spending for their entire budget, pay down, use reserves to pay for operations, which is, should be a very short-term situation, not a permanent state. And then get into the position where their reserves have dwindled down to almost nothing. And then they're in deficit spending and you cannot not pay your fire contract. You have to pay your fire contract as well as MCSO. So what, what we should be looking at is making sure that the budget is sustainable over decades. And, and probably in my opinion, in a more balanced way with a diversified revenue stream than simply relying on something that's pretty volatile. So.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I personally am in favor of diversifying the revenue possibilities. But I'm just bringing up the point that could there be a block? Like, why put a lot of discussion into it if there is a blocking situation? I personally am in favor of diversifying the revenue sources.
Thank you. Yes, Leslie.
I, I was remiss. I needed to offer thanks to Gary Lee.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You struck a wonderful balance between upstirring us by giving us all right, this report is ours, we own it. And you were there. Thank you very much. And you exactly reported us. Thank you.
Uh, as we're, we're sharing the thanks and the love, I'd like to thank the, the committee. As, as we embarked on this, you know, I, I instructed them about open meeting laws and all the requirements that were there to follow. But what, what is a keystone to everything that we have done? I've been here 20 years. I've been working in the public sector 30 years. The cornerstone of what we do as a community and any community that I've worked for is citizen involvement. And here you have eight citizens that did a deep dive in this issue and struggled to reconcile the answers and came up with some recommendations. And most likely is parallel to your thinking as well too, as, as you have reviewed the, the reports and the, and the findings. Uh, so I'd like to thank the, the committee and the effort. There's not one person that probably has not put in probably close to 50 or 60 hours into, to this, uh, this process. So it was a very deep dive into these issues. Uh, it was a struggle. There were a lot of politics behind the scenes. But I like to thank them for their patience and, and the, uh, the deep dive that they did into this issue. And I think the, the result shows that the, the council in this community that we're serious about improving the level of service of, of fire emergency services. And we're trying to reconcile how to pay for that.
Thank you. I, I would just point the clarification, political wasn't from the council, it was from outside sources. Because the council has been, yes, like, like this.
Thank you for that clarification.
But, uh, but thank you. Is there anyone else who, there'll be ample opportunity? Yes, sir.
I wanted to point out on this evening, but I do feel, um, I need to do a couple of things. One is tremendous amount of work done. It's a very complicated picture as, as you all unfortunately discovered. But, and so I wanted to do that. I also wanted to thank, you know, everybody for, for the diligence and, and considering the needs of the citizens and the impact, um, both for public safety and finance. Um, and third, I wanted to make sure that I represented the men and women who you have kindly said have done a great service for the community for many, many years. With that, I'm going to play the new guy card. Okay, so I've been here three months. Uh, stepped into the middle of a, of a, of a fairly tense situation and one honestly that surprised me after 30 years career in the fire service. And I'll make a, a, a personal statement. And then I will try to refrain from any more of those because that's why I don't work in the city government anymore. But I don't like bullies. I really don't. I really think. And I, and I want to say just a little bit, um, and it's unfair to you all because you represent the citizens of Carefree. But I protect 240,000 residents in the unincorporated areas of Maricopa and Alcalde County. And because of the contract here and because of what we were able to do in, in Cave Creek, we were able to provide services up north and down south and out the Rio Grande River. And if we don't end up being able to maintain this funding stream, we will not be able to maintain services to a lot of other people. And nobody wants to think about that. Big Red, Scottsdale, those folks don't want to think about that. Everybody's out protecting their own and nobody's thinking about the people that we're trying to protect in a, in a, in an environment that doesn't really benefit a private business. And yes, we're a private business, but we're a public safety organization. And it was founded by a gentleman a long time ago in Scottsdale who was taking care of his neighbor. And so that's what we're doing. We're taking care of our neighbors. We're taking care of the people who nobody else is taking care of. And unfortunately, the decision that you make will have a dramatic impact on a lot of people outside of Carefree. And that's unfair. It's unfair to you to have to, it's unfair of me to bring that to your, to your attention because it's not your, it's not what you're voted to do. But again, like I said, that's not why I work in city government anymore. But again, I think, you know, there is, the automatic aid system is, is the Cadillac. It is one of the best in the country. It is absolutely something that everyone aspires to emulate within their, their governments. It protects firefighters and protects citizens. It is also represented of a lot of very powerful unions who do a lot to protect their members as they should, but not necessarily at the benefit of cost savings. And not necessarily always in the benefit of public safety. But don't, don't misunderstand that what if you are able to do it? Automatic aid certainly gives you the Cadillac of public safety. It does not give you the Cadillac of customer care or citizen service. Before you guys make decisions, and I would encourage you to work, you know, Chief Pratt's is a tremendous asset should you choose to go down that route. But I'd encourage you guys to look at the number of times the Daisy Mountain engine in Cave Creek is no longer in Cave Creek. As the automatic aid system, the big utilizers get a lot of resources from the smaller utilizers. And so when a call comes, Rural Metro or Carefree who comes and provides a service because we care for the community. We are here. This is what we do. We care for the people who are here. And not say that any firefighter around in the automatic aid system doesn't care. But if you get a firefighter from Scottsdale, are they caring for your community as much as your fire department does? If you get a firefighter from Phoenix on the engine waiting for the ambulance, which we still provide to transport that person, are they still getting the customer care and the customer service? So there really is a piece that I don't believe was addressed necessarily. And it may not have been in the charter of, of the advisory committee to do so. Public safety is one piece, but the service to the community and the care to the community and the ownership of the community by your public service agencies, I think is something that you, I would ask you to please consider as well. Um, but again, don't get me wrong, automatic aid, you know, there's nothing uh, negative to say with regards to the public safety aspect. And if it's certainly that that you're looking at. Now, again, as, as I told Chief Tobin and as I told Chief Shannon, if we get a fire up here, I'm going to call you. If you choose not to come, that's your choice. But you sure as hell better know it'll be on every news blast that I can find. Because that's not the way firefighters work.
The, you know, the, the irony of all of this is that 25 years ago in Scottsdale, the yellow fire trucks, Scottsdale Fire Department was Rural Metro. And I grew up with a lot of guys. I grew up in Phoenix and I grew up with a lot of guys that, that, uh, close friends of mine that worked with Rural Metro and, uh, there is, there's no compromise in service. And, and you know, the, the other thing that's ironic about this whole thing is that while Rural Metro is privatized, it's the municipal fire departments that are, uh, charging or, or, or offering quotes that are much higher than, than what our current fire service provider offers. So it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of good people in this room that care about this community, meaning you guys in, in back with the hats on and, and, and you sacrifice a lot every day for us. And so the reason why I was asking you, Gary, regarding this, this life safety council is that there, there must be another avenue to pursue to continue to try and work with these guys to see if, if there is something with regard to training, with staffing, uh, to, to negotiate and, and to keep shouting from, from the top, you know, from rooftops to, to be heard, uh, to try and make this work with the folks in this room. Mayor, members of the council, that's why in, in, um, early October, I sent a letter to the Life Safety Council. And the letter talked about our investment. We were not Cave Creek. We always had skin in the game. We built an award-winning fire station with a emergency operations center. We have state-of-the-art equipment that, that equipment is what you would find on that letter, I asked, what would be the process? The process to join automatic aid? I wasn't asking for a denial. I asked for what the process would be as Carefree being a sister municipality. Like Scottsdale, Phoenix, Mesa, Chandler, they're all part of automatic aid. We are a municipal organization. We are a subdivision of the state. We are part of the Phoenix metropolitan area. If they preach uniformity in their standards, why shouldn't that uniformity also apply to Carefree? Why does it matter what contract we have for private labor that we place within that firehouse and on that equipment? So I asked the question. And I was vilified for asking the question by, uh, some residents in town and by some fire. Obviously there's politics and when I referred to politics, it wasn't the council. It was these external influences that don't want to give the keys to the kingdom to Rural Metro. And I think that's unfortunate. You, you heard from Chief Soul and he was very articulate about the frustration. This is about first responders helping first responders. And I, I make the joke, it's, it's, it's not no responders, they're, they're first responders. Why, why is it this way? Why can't we all work together in the name of public safety? And I've been to other municipalities and heard their fire chiefs talk about, in the name of public safety, I need this equipment. Well, in the name of public safety, uniformity, working together in a collaborative fashion to help one another is what it was about. So I asked them and we finally got a letter two and a half months after my initial request. And it wasn't about the process, it was about denial. And denial, as, as Peter articulated, was achievable. The things that they said, well, you don't meet the staffing, you don't have the radio equipment, you don't have the training. That's all achievable. If you give us the keys to the door, we will have the staffing. That's a contractual commitment. We'll get the training, let us into the Phoenix Academy or, or one of the other three academies that the automatic aid consortium trains under. We can do all this. The radio equipment is joining the, the Phoenix radio, signing the contract. So it's, it's probably a significant lift to do that. It would probably take many years. Meanwhile, you know, we are this, this island that there's these threats out in the community now that they hear from Scottsdale and Daisy Mountain that they're in May of 2020, which was not once, not twice, but three times a regional response. They get scared, you know, what if we do not have that response? Um, so, you know, we, we have that issue and, and, you know, the chief talks about being bullied. You know, it's, we're, we're being forced into this. And, and one of the things I've articulated to Chief Tobin as well as Chief Shannon is that this is a financial issue. We're not arguing about the merits of, of automatic aid. But we have to have a financial model that's married with our financial capacity. And right now it doesn't support that. And so you have to give us time to achieve that. But I ask questions to look at ways to achieve it more economically, such as our existing contract with Rural Metro. Can we preserve that contract, get them trained in automatic aid and still qualify? And they just won't give me the time of day. And then we get a response in a local paper from the chairperson of that committee. From the chairperson of that committee that says. Basically, as long as you contract with Rural Metro, you will not qualify for automatic aid. So, you know, I'm not going to be able to, to fight automatic aid. I've talked to a lot of my, my peers, a lot of city managers. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a battle that we most likely will not win.
Is, is this something that, that our council can, can address with the, the city council in Scottsdale?
I, I, I don't, I don't believe you're going to make any headway there and, and if one of your potential partners. Uh, is, uh, the city of Scottsdale going down there and, and trying to, um, ban the flames, no pun intended. Is, is not going to help you. It will be a detriment. So, um, you know, we have to cultivate relationships here. We, we have to. Realize good, bad or indifferent. Um, this is the landscape. This is what we're presented with. It's not where this committee wanted to, to wind up. Um, but it's, it's where we're at and, and the, the politics came out during this process. And we're not going to change those politics. They are what they are.
One thing I think we should do in the studies is I'd like us to look at the financial health of Daisy Mountain. I'm not concerned about Scottsdale. I'd like to know what's going on there, if anything.
Just to show how political it is. Those mutual aid agreements and contracts weren't, uh, terminated until. The course of the committee, the direction of the committee was going was very clear. And then at, at the last hour, they were terminated. That's all very political. And at the end of the day. If we overextend ourselves financially, they won't care. Don't just pack up and leave. So we have to come up with good solutions.
Thank you, Chief. You touched upon some very deep issues, uh, that are very meaningful. Um, to us, for the citizens, for your organization. Um, for people outside of Carefree. Um, we, we have our work cut out. We need to gain more information. Uh, in the upcoming months and, uh, we need to do it quickly and, and make those decisions and. And I think they need to be long-term decisions.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question and this Gary or, or the committee or the chief for that matter. Are, are any of these services with Rural Metro, if we have to go down the path. With regard to contracting with another municipality for fire service, but. But ultimately could be provided by Rural while, you know, to handle what the majority of our requests were. Versus, you know, limited fire staffing, uh, with the municipality. You know what I mean with my question there?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how that application would work, uh, because of the overlap be, between the, you know, respective incidents. Um, so that, that, that would present some difficulty with dispatch and, and, and dealing with, with emergencies. Because sometimes they, they do get pretty complex. I, I don't know if that would work. You would have to, uh, go to.
Like an all or none?
Yes, yes.
Gary, I have a quick question. So we're going to, we're going to take up these resolutions based on the committee's. Recommendations. Do you have a timeline for these, these actions and when we would have deliverables and. Could you lay out the, the, the next steps of the process and where we're going?
So a, a, as I said earlier, this is a, a citizen-driven process. So from the, the bottom. Down. So we have a citizen committee that gives a, a report and some recommendations. From there, we, we have consultants, uh, that will engage, um, uh, probably tomorrow. Uh, to, uh, look and do a deeper dive into these respective recommendations and issues and, and define some paths for us. Uh, so the fire consultant and the, the financial analyst will be engaged as early as, as tomorrow or, or later on this week. Um, it will probably be about a two to three month process for them to, uh, um, get the, their documentation together. Uh, do a deep dive in the issues and then, uh, they will come back. Uh, before the council and talk about some of their initial findings. Fine tune that, um, based upon, uh, the dialogue that they have with the council. That into the community and hold a series of, of public open houses. Um, and during that, we will have a, a deep dive onto the actual costs. Peter says, well, you know, the all-in costs are undefined. We know at the surface what some of these costs would be. But that there might be some additional costs, uh, that we have not thought about or has, have not been shared with us. Uh, we have a comprehensive fire program right now with Rural Metro. Peter outlined some of those level of services such as a, a fire marshal, for example, is covered through Rural Metro. That is not covered, uh, by the numbers that Daisy Mountain gave us or Scottsdale. Whether e, either one of those entities would provide that service, it's, it's unknown at this point in time. So that, that individual that's knowledgeable about our program, our assets would go to each one of these entities. And, and review with them what our needs are so that we can define the actual all-in costs. At the same time that is occurring, the financial, uh, uh, analysts would look at our capacity to pay. What is our financial model? How can we absorb these costs? And if we can't, what are our options and what would that yield? In addition, they will also address the, the capacity, um, of the entity that we might do business with in, in a fire district. And, and you know, what, what are the costs associated with entering into a business model with a fire district? One, the concerns is that there is no cap on the Cave Creek, uh, contract. And if that's the model that they're pointing to, that, uh, we would have to adopt. The concern for me from a business perspective is I cannot predict what those costs will be. In the next three years, in the next five years, in the next ten years, but I know those costs will go up. So the concern for me is you, you set the, the bottom line and maybe it was a little bit cheaper than Scottsdale and may, maybe. Maybe there, that, that, that effort there between Scottsdale and Daisy Mountain to push us over, uh, to, to, uh, Daisy Mountain. But what are those costs going to be in the future? I would want to understand that, that financial model. And that potential liability of that partner that might be placed upon us as a unregulated revenue stream. In a fire district, it's a property tax. We are not part of that property tax. You have a five-member governing board in Daisy Mountain that then, that we don't elect. Will decide what the future contract cost will be on an annual basis to the citizens of Carefree. This is a twenty-five-year contract that the town of Cave Creek entered. A twenty-five-year commitment.
No idea what it costs.
They, they did not adopt any ceiling on, on those annual escalators. So that's my concern is from a business model, you want some predictability in, in, in those respective costs. So that's what this financial.
Lay all this out and start asking, you're, you're, you're going to collect this information in the next ninety days, you think?
Yes, that's, that's the target, the next ninety days. Come back to the council, share what their findings are. Um, and then, uh, go out and, and, uh, do some open houses, uh, this, this summer, um, and early fall. And then, um, based upon the information that, uh, the consultants, uh, get from, from the citizens. Fine tune the recommendations, um, and then present them to the council and the community. Um, probably sometime later on this fall with, with decisions, uh, this fall on what the council would like to do.
Thank you.
I think, I think we should also recognize a twenty-five-year contract, just on basic inflation, that contract's going to increase by three hundred percent. Easy. And without an unknown, on, on that, we can't sign up. The risk is too high and relative, personally, I think relative to the cost they're, we're facing. To the quality of service we're already receiving from Rural Metro. This is a big job. I'm not, I'm not convinced.
Oh, no, it's, I, I don't like the corner we put in. I don't like the fact that the people, Rural Metro, they've taken care of us. The last fifteen years, the last fifty years. We're all getting squeezed. I mean, the, the, the Daisy Mountain contract, if you just look at it, if those numbers are the bottom line, it's three million dollars at the end of five years.
Usually.
We built an economic development model that was based on. Starting at a million five and having regular inflation and maybe we could, we could get there, but this is a whole nother deal. That's just in the first five years.
We're going to put our citizens in a very bad position financially.
We're going to have a tax, a property tax, we can't, it isn't going to be big enough, it can't make big enough and it's going to eat up all the economic. The whole town's going to rerun to, to support a fire department.
Right.
And nothing else.
But we have a lot to do. No one is disagreeing with that.
Yeah.
And we've had some preliminary thoughts, but. Those are very important things. Chief Kratz, did I see your hand up?
No, no.
Okay, is there anyone else? Then we'll close, call to the public, item number three. Review, discussion and possible action to approve and adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero three. Accepting into the public record the Public Safety Advisory Committee report. And recommendation dated, dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And dissolving the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And let me just read a little bit from the resolution. Now therefore it is resolved by the mayor and town council of the town of Carefree, Arizona, that number one. The Public Safety Advisory Committee report and recommendations dated January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And attached as exhibit A are accepted into the public record as the final report. Of the PSAC, the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And number two, the advisory committee shall be dissolved. With the town council's acceptance into the public record of this final report. So I think they've done a stellar job of getting us to where we are right now to team up the issues. We have some more. Deep dive into the numbers, et cetera, and then they'll come back to us. I'm looking for. A motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero three.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero three.
I'll second, but I don't want to dissolve this committee.
No, I don't either. Absolutely.
I'd like to have.
We have four more big projects.
We'll reconvene and reappoint on something else.
Yeah.
Motion, motion has been made and seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council?
Councilmember Geiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Delicia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye. Thank you all. You're now dissolved.
Item number four. Review, discussion and possible action to approve and adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero four. To implement, implement the recommendations of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. As outlined in the January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two report. And directing the staff to secure qualified consultants. To assist in the transition of the regional automatic aid dispatch system. Finding of consultants will be shared in a, the findings of these consultants will be shared in a future public open houses. And town council meetings, so community and the town council can consider the all-in cost. And the options to fund the automatic aid system. Any discussion from the council on that? This is really calling for the appointment of, of, uh, two consultants to help us get to the next stage. And get to the decision.
Yeah, without making any other decision.
That's correct.
Too much to consider.
Will anyone make that motion?
I will. What you said.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council?
Can, can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, I apologize. It, it just came to me. Do we, do we have an estimate of what the cost would be to appoint these consultants?
Um, the, uh, fire consultant, we're looking at about seventy-five dollars an hour. On a as-needed basis and then the, uh, financial consultant, we're looking at approximately forty-five thousand dollars.
Annually?
Uh, for the. Um, for the contract to do the, the financial modeling.
Got it. Okay.
Candace, I'd like to stop for a moment. Let, let me back up a little bit here. Let me go to the point in the resolution. Which currently reads, to ensure this goal is met. One or more retired fire chiefs will be retained to assist in negotiating a short-term extension. With Rural Metro and/or other future intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with an automatic aid provider. Uh, I believe it came from, uh, Leslie, uh, yesterday. But broaden fire chief to fire emergency service professional. And I would like to also add not only future IGA with an automatic aid partner. Which in my mind would limit it to Scottsdale or Daisy Mountain. But to broaden that, that there's an option for Carefree to develop and have its own fire department. I would like to make that change to the recommendation.
Mayor, what we need to do since we've already started is. We need to finish the vote and you can not pass the current motion because that's already on the table. And then set out a new motion, please.
If you might complete the current motion on the table.
Yes. Uh, councilmember Delicia.
Um, so the, so what we are doing is, is we are. Going through the, the current motion that we just started.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Just said.
Okay.
You liked the suggestion from the mayor, you would go against this motion.
Okay, nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Hatcher, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember Croyer, how do you vote?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Crane. And Mayor Peter.
No.
Thank you.
I'd like to put the new motion on the table.
Thank you, sir.
And that is to strike retired fire chiefs and replace it with. We'll work on the wording, but the fire emergency service professionals. And also add, I sent, uh, continue that sentence to give us the option. Not only to look at an IGA with our automatic aid partners, which are implying, uh. Daisy Mountain or Scottsdale, but also to evaluate it remaining and having the Carefree independent. Our own fire department. So I would accept a motion to approve that one.
I'll make that motion. The second bullet. I believe some of that same thought process carries over.
The second bullet on.
On the second page.
That you're correct. And then now therefore be it resolved. And if you go to the second page. Execute professional service contracts with one or more, currently says retired fire chiefs. And we'll, we'll make that then. Fire emergency service professionals. We'll, we'll make it consistent throughout if it shows up anywhere in there.
Okay.
Good catch. Is there anyone who would approve?
We have the motion.
Make the motion.
Someone read what the motion is.
Whereas, to ensure this goal is met. One or more. Fire emergency service professionals will be retained to assist in negotiating a short-term extension of the Rural Metro. Contract and/or a future intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with an automatic aid partner. And also look at both of these relative to Carefree having its own independent fire department.
What's the importance of the term short-term in here in this paragraph? Why is that important?
So the, the contract expires next summer. Uh, it's going to take us approximately an additional year. So the the contract expires next summer. Uh, it's going to take us approximately an additional year. Uh, to.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Design some solutions here, so.
That's done.
So, yes.
Does that limit us if we decide that? For whatever reasons, we need more time or it makes the most sense to go further than a year? Are we limited in that?
So I've I've Chief Soul Soul's here. Um, I've had conversations with him too about the flexibility of of that that timeline and options. Uh, to renew and uh certainly, as always, Rural Metro is very flexible and and discussing it. Uh, those flexible terms with them incorporated.
We have all our options on the table.
Yep.
So you have the motion. Do you have any?
The the motion has been made or the motion has been articulated. Is there anyone who will make that?
So clearly.
Cheryl. Yeah.
Cheryl makes the motion. Is someone who would second it?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Candace, would you please poll the council?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. This has been a very insightful and productive meeting. We appreciate all of you. Attending and participating. Have a good evening.